All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody at home and everybody here. This is the mayor and council agenda and work in regular session. It is February 22nd, 7:30 PM. Linda, will you please call the meeting to order and read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement, please?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meetings, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the February 15th, 2024 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website. Councilwoman Dela with Theo.
Councilwoman Homan.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Yakarino.
Here.
Mayor Wazinski. Here. Everybody please stand. Lisa Flack. All right. Next, we have approval of minutes, January 18th, 2024. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Homan.
Second, please.
Second, Lovasolo.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Abstain.
Councilman O'Toole.
Abstain.
Councilman Yakarino.
Abstain.
Wait a minute.
We think we have a majority of those.
Come on.
Can we have a motion to table the approval of minutes to the next meeting, I think that's March?
Seven.
Seventh.
All right.
We do a motion.
We have a motion to table the minutes.
Yes. Homan.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Alrighty. All right. Next, we have a presentation by me. So. Okay. Yay. I was planning on doing this individually and we can't go wireless, John.
Windows key.
But yeah, it doesn't, mine, my computer's so old, I guess. Um. I know, again, we've talked about this for a long time and this is something that I wanted to present to everybody in our committee meetings, however, kind of didn't really have a chance. Every time our committee meetings are over, we have to leave. Where's my?
Hello. This is good. You're gonna like this. Just pay attention. These are two awesome students.
And they're back.
They're your students.
They are, and they're also voice gaps and they're. What else would they call me?
This is what happened last time and we didn't get to the presentation, so.
Give me 30 seconds. Go.
Otherwise, you're gonna have to walk us through what the slides are. Maybe you could even send them to us. Anyway, we've always, you know, everybody, we've had our committees and everybody has usually kind of like a loose set of goals of what we're supposed to do in our committees, but there really hasn't ever been any, you know, structure around it and we haven't ever really presented it to the public. So, you know, in the effort to be transparent, I thought it would be good to just have some type of a formalization to it and then I'd like to present it to the public. So this is things that I put together. I know some of you saw my stickies on the wall, but it's really, it's not me giving you the goals and it just has to come from all of us. So this is just something that I put together. We can have some discussion now, but I don't think we need to have like a massive discussion. It's probably better if I'm gonna ask questions but take notes and then I can talk to you all individually. Cause I mean, this could be a long, you know, if you talk about.
But Amy and.
John.
Amy, I think it was such a good idea because I do feel like with, and a lot of people here served on the water committee, we kind of talked about what were the goals that we wanted the community to know and to make decisions on, and I think it was good.
Yeah, and I think too, like especially with all of us, that we don't get paid and this is a lot of work that. Um, so that's why like I'm not, yeah, this is something that we, you know, we're trying to, I'm not basically telling everybody they have to do this. This is just something I think that would be good for all of us moving forward. All right, I'm plugging it in.
It's connected.
Is my cord on?
There it is.
Yay. Tyler, if you need me to help.
Should I, should I never sign the DPDW?
Why?
I have no idea how much toilet paper costs. And trash though. That's amazing.
Oh, that's before, that's okay. Yeah, we don't need it, so keep them here on their safe guard. Okay. So, going forward. Um, so I, I thought we could have, you know, like tagline, like usually with companies and corporations, everybody kind of has, you know, has a little bit of a tagline. So transparent, accountable, responsible government. I figured all those words were kind of catchwords. Play around with them a little bit, but certainly honestly open for discussion. Um, and then I really thought we should have a purpose, like all, like studies have shown that companies that have a purpose that everybody can get behind are the ones that are, that are the ones that are successful. So it's not really like what you're doing, it's why you're doing it, like why are you getting up out of bed in the morning and doing this? And for all of us, I can honestly say, the reason that we're doing it is because we're serving residents and we're trying to make Allendale a better place to live. I mean, to me, that's like very simple and the companies that have like a simple uh, purpose are the ones that are successful, like Helotons I love is something like, um, you know, bringing fitness to everybody wherever you are. Very simple, but it just is exactly what it is. Google is something like bringing the internet to, you know, bringing information to, to people worldwide. So for us, you know, like I said, we are volunteers, you know, we are not getting paid. So we're not doing this for the paycheck. We're doing it for another reason. So, um, I thought this purpose sits, but of course this is something that can also be tweaked. So pillars of progress, like where are we? Like what are we doing to make Allendale to serve residents? Fiscally conservative, I think that goes without saying, we're all have always been fiscally conservative. Um, we start with our budget, we look at every single line item. Uh, safe place to live, if you don't have safe place to live, everything else just goes down the, you know, the toilet. Like to me, you have to, if you don't have your safety, then you can't have anything else to do on that. Character, this one I was kind of playing around with a little bit, cause we always say like we love Allendale, why, why do we love Allendale? We just love the, you know, the, the cuteness of the town, of the character of the town, just a nice town, but we can work with that as well. And you'll see, cause I align these all to the committees. Environment, infrastructure and recreation and social. Recreation and social is just as important to a community as infrastructure. If you don't have a recreation department or social piece to a, a community, then that really takes away from the community. So as you'll see, I aligned them with the committees, the fiscally conservative, so we had our admin, finance, HR, and we put IT on it this year. Kind of nowhere to put IT, but I really do think that IT probably will be in this next one going forward. We'll have to see. Um, and then just some points with the admin, finance, HR committee. Good economics, working with best practices, best place to work, leadership training, drive digital transformation. Safe place to live, support our police. We are definitely a community that support our police, not like some of these other crazy communities that don't. Um, training, our, we're, you know, our police, we want to have the best training, we keep up with that. We have our AVAC and our fire department. Um, we trust and respect, it's super important that we trust our, you know, police department and have respect for them and vice versa, and fair treatment. And I think there's a lot of examples of where the fair treatment comes in from our police department that we hear. So character, uh, it's kind of like our land use committee, so we have our code that we always look at. We have, um, we want to protect our property. We have our land use board. We have fair share housing that we have to deal with and historic preservation. And then environment and infrastructure is our DPW committee, our, and utilities committee. We have infrastructure again, we have trees, we have sewer, we have flooding, recycling and wildlife management. And these are all just kind of things that keep on coming up. And then recreation and social, we have facilities parks and rec where we have community engagement. We have our recreation and we have all our volunteers. So then the, the goal piece of these, so if we take all these and we go towards 2024 goals, and this is where I think, you know, each committee can look and see what goals they have. These are the ones that we're kind of already working on, on each one. And then from here, you know, each one of the committees, we can work a little bit further and I'll work with all of you to see like where we want to go with this and how we want to carry out the goal. So we have our team's integration is gonna be a big piece right now in our finance. Of course, it's always the budget. Um, training, training with the team's integration, leadership training, zero-based budgeting and goals for the staff. Obviously, we did much more than these two. Safe place to live, we've got public safety. We have, um, solutions to volunteer challenges. That's something that we've been working on in public safety. Um, we have to look at our court. We have our trucks, 230 trucks that we're dealing with right now. We have speeding downtown. This was at the time I was doing it. I know there's more things at the time that's been, you know, added on. And the flooding committee, which I put in blue, cause that kind of goes across a bunch of different committees, but that's not even actually started in our health safety committee. So character of the town, we have our land use, so this is where the fair share housing is. Um, we're dealing with a new judge, we're dealing with a new attorney. We have our historic preservation, we're working on murals. We have land preservation we're trying to do. We have our land board packet. Um, and then our celery farm recently, there's some upgrades we're working on with our celery farm. And then environmental infrastructure, we have our new superintendent. Um, we're restructuring whether we should outsource versus in-house. Um, we have our sewer agreements that we're working on, um, infrastructure upgrades at our roads. And then we have equipment in this part that we do. So those are some of the top front of mind things in the DPW. And then with our recreation and facilities parks and rec, we've got our fresh wood concession stand is a big thing going on there. The community center kind of falls under this as well, right? Um, and then four town halls, you'll see, like I'd like to present this to the community where we're all there. So, um, it'll be like in a town hall where the community can kind of go to all the committees and actually, you know, ask questions in a setting that's not as intimidating as this. Yeah, this is, nobody comes here, let's face it. Um, so anyway, we have our volunteer group, holiday decor. Come on, I think I go.
I agree.
Committee of fun.
And then of course upgrades to Borough Hall, the kitchen, all that. Um, so that's pretty much kind of it. Um, what I, what I'd like to do, oh, so this I kind of said the Allendale way. So these are just things that, um, I think we could put this on our website. We can just advertise like this is where we are transparent government. This is the way that we, this is kind of like our guidelines. We're innovative, we're always trying to think of better ways of doing things. We're informed, we're trying to stay current on everything like 365 and also but preserving the past. You know, we, I think Crestwood Lake is the perfect example of that, you know, we're, we're making it current, but we're trying to keep it with the character of Crestwood Lake. We're intentional, we have, um, policies that we're trying to benefit the whole entire community. And that's where we always run into problems with residents. Residents, you know, always think in their own little space and while we listen to every resident, we have to really look at the whole entire community. We're inclusive, we listen to everybody, whether we agree with them or not agree with them. We're in touch, we're transparent. I think we've tried that a lot last year. We're doing it again this year. We're having, you know, um, more open, uh, more coffee. We have coffee with the cops. We're gonna have more, um, open houses, uh, or town halls rather. And also, for example, dear management, we want to start bringing in some experts to talk about that. Um, hands-on approach, collaboration for residents and integrity. We do things for the right reason. So this is just a couple of examples of how we could potentially write our goals down. And like I said, I'm not gonna be like, this is not like an office, I'm not gonna have to, you know, write like all your KPIs and, you know, meet you, but this is just.
This is where our research is based on.
Ideas. This is not your.
But I think it helps, it does help us to have kind of like a progress. And when you're meeting with residents, like people say, I don't know what's going on and you're kind of like, well, is this is.
Organize, but not only for us though, for the next, you know, council person. So this isn't just your one-year goal. This is definitely goals like that you want for two years down the road or five years down the road. So it's not necessarily something that obviously that you'll have maybe finishing your term and then the person.
Oh, we get to leave lists. I love that.
And then to me, one important thing is that we celebrate because, you know, we have to have fun.
It is Charlie.
Um, now we do have to have fun. It's really important to celebrate, not just as a group celebrate, but we have to celebrate our wins, you know, things that we do, like when we have the, you know, concession stand open up or when we have a great band.
The ribbon cutting and.
The ribbon cutting and.
The t-shirt.
So we have to, we have to make sure that we celebrate. So I want to show, some of you guys don't have to.
Intervention. You went off. Intervention.
You know when the last time I was on LinkedIn? But that is, that's a sharp looking guy. Why is my name? He's toasting our success.
I see celebration. These are our former residents, so they can see the fact we are.
I can't see that far, but.
Our business. I'm gonna show everybody. I found, I love you. I found Andy.
The firemen, not police.
He's just turned into a roast. You could get money for these.
This is why you want to run for government, boys. You get a lot done, but you have a good crew to work with.
Yeah. I'm like, forget it. I'm just gonna have to.
It's true.
But the, the point about that is that so our residents can actually see who's here. I think it's important that they put a face to a name, so.
Yep, there we are.
So these are still.
Yeah, there we are.
I like the picture that's on the website of all of us, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really nice.
That was Todd's picture.
Yeah, it was a nice picture.
So anyway, these are some dates that I put out there. I don't know if these work for everybody, but I'd like to start getting some calendars, cause we're gonna have to do the open public, you know, uh, we're gonna advertise for all of you.
Wait, wait, go back, go back. I need to write those down.
I'll send you that. I'll send it out to everybody.
Amy, make sure you send a calendar. It's really good.
I just threw those out there.
I, I think it's been awesome.
Mayor, that was a great presentation. That was a great presentation.
That's pictured up with standings.
Not just what made it, that made it. Like I said, it's not, um, you know, I'm not gonna be like holding everybody. So like, I stand for something like that. I just thought it might be something that would be helpful.
What did you learn from today's presentation? Matt needs a picture.
Good job.
We did it. We didn't do another close session. We did a good job.
That's a lot of work.
Sorry. Too bad, actually. All right, where are we?
That photo, right?
Yeah, maybe. That's for LinkedIn, though.
I guess.
It, it.
I don't know. When was the last time I was on LinkedIn?
Thank God.
On my LinkedIn page.
All right.
Back when I was on Facebook.
So what do we have next? We have agenda review. All right, so first we have a second reading of ordinance 24 dash 02. So this is the ordinance for the extra money for the fire department. Then we have the fire department ADA bathroom. Then we have ordinance 24 oh three, which is to revise a part of the code. Um, why don't we go back? Mike, you can, I, actually, why don't you explain it now? Yeah.
Sure. Uh, ordinance 24 dash 03 is an ordinance that deals with, uh, having officers work extra duty details after their normal shift. So, um, we encourage our officers to be out in the community more and a slight change on the existing ordinance would facilitate more of my staff being able to do that.
Great, thank you. So next we have our consent agenda. These are matters that are routine, but I would like to actually point out a couple so everybody can see all the great work that we're doing. Um, we are a couple of highlights. Uh, we are actually approving a Crestwood Lake membership to Northern Highlands Music and Performing Arts. We will be getting another vehicle in our police department. We also have a resolution regarding a bill, um, which proposes an overhaul to fair share housing. Um, this is something that we've talked about many, many times, um, in this council. We, Allendale are one of the six municipalities who actually did, um, get certified in our third round. A lot of towns didn't and a lot of towns are building multiple houses. Now, did you see Ho-Ho's lately? Did you see that city they're building? It's insane. Montvale is crazy. Um, and Saddle River actually is building a lot of units and they happen to be right on the border of Allendale. So it is something that, um, a lot of our governors kind of screwed up personally. I think our last governor, um, did a lot as well because he didn't really try to fix it and it's something that needs to be fixed and it's ruining the fabric of New Jersey and a lot of these small towns. And what they're doing is giving us astronomical numbers that there's no possible way that we could ever meet. So what we have to do then is find what's called an overlay zone. So then they look for a piece of land that has something on it with a lot of acres, like a church or a nursery or a golf course, and they say, you know what? This is what's gonna happen. So in maybe five years or maybe 10 years or whatever years it's gonna be, that, that will be a high-density development.
With no, with all impervious coverage.
With all impervious coverage and we already have flooding problems. This exacerbates it. Um, for example, there is a proposal for 275 units to go in in Saddle River right on our border and it doesn't need any zoning and that was an overlay zone that they did. So, um, we will be feeling the impact of that. This resolution is just letting Trenton know that we are not happy, um, but who knows what's gonna happen with it? Um, we'll have, we'll have to see. Um, so we had a little bit of asbestos in our firehouse, so this, uh, we're awarding somebody to abate that. And we have our temporary budget appropriation. We have list of bills.
Mm-hmm.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Um, and we actually have a grant that we're putting in, uh, potentially for the concession stand. And what else? That's it. All right. So now, ordinance 24 dash oh two, this is. Uh, any, uh, I'm sorry. Anybody have a, a public comment on any agenda item? Not seeing anybody. Go back to vote. So we have second reading for ordinance 25, 24 dash oh two. Linda, will you please read?
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on February 8th, 2024 and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance 24 dash 02, capital ordinance of the Borough of Allendale in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing various public improvements in by and for the borough, appropriating therefore the sum of $82,000 and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the capital improvement fund of the borough.
Does anybody from the public have any comment on ordinance 24 dash 02? Not seeing anybody. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Lovasolo.
Second, please.
Homan.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 24 dash 03. This is first reading. Linda, will you please read ordinance 24 dash 03?
Ordinance 24 dash 03, in ordinance to amend, supplement and revise chapter 26, 26 dash 31D of the Borough Code of the Borough of Allendale.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Or, ordinance 24 dash 03.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Excellent. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Super. Thank you. All right. Next, we have council report. Councilman Yakarino.
I gotta get used to going first.
I know. You better be prepared. That new haircut, come on.
Just for the meeting. Uh, facilities committee has been very eventful over the past couple of weeks. Of course, you know, the prominent topic right now is dealing with the concession stand. Now, of course, as I reported in more color at the last meeting, there are so many moving parts of this demolition, working with our professionals, Andy from the DPW has been extraordinarily helpful. Um, really just kind of getting a wall of our ducks in a row. Um, we're gonna be approving hopefully at the next meeting, phase two and three from our architect for professional services and hopefully go out to bid there soon thereafter. You know, so that will really start to move along and hopefully by the end of May, we'll pretty much have a clear idea in terms of, you know, who our contractor's gonna be and, you know, kind of how well that will be moving forward with regards to the concession stand. So that's really been the top, um, topic, if you will, along with other things, you know, regarding Borough Hall improvements, which are, as we see and visualize, have been moving along very nicely and we're very happy for that. Um, and other than that, again, we've been having periodic check-ins, a lot of emails back and forth. So a lot of things are moving forward, especially as we head into the spring sports season. So more to come on that. Um, two things that are coming up within less than a month. Again, we are having the motor vehicle mobile unit coming to the firehouse, the week of March 10th. Uh, next week, we'll really start advertising that to more of the general public. Um, we've been advertising exclusively right now to our first responders and our seniors and borough employees just to give them, um, just kind of first crack at it. But there is probably about 275 appointments still available for the general public, so still plenty to go around for everybody. Um, and then also Sunday, May 5th, we'll be having a Cars and Coffee event to help raise community awareness, community engagement, hopefully some money for the mural, so.
Yay.
Lots of fun things going on.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just a question on the, um, the mobile licensing unit, so that they people will register online.
Correct. So typically, so I had come to find the mobile unit when I renewed my license in Whitehall about two years ago. At that time, they offered a lot more services, but as the push for the real ID comes and with real ID, they ask for pre-registration, uh, the form online, you fill out your driver's license, your official name, your mailing address, but yes, you would need an appointment. But they are also collecting old license plates and I believe they're also doing duplicate titles and. But the appointments are online, pretty much real IDs.
And we want those appointments all filled up, correct?
Well, it's, it's a great service.
I mean, I'm just thinking even the high school kids that are getting their license, seniors that they're getting their license. I mean, but again, knowing that there's 250.
Renewal, real ID renewals. So for example, like if you're asking for like high school, if it's their first issue of a license, I don't think that they can do this at this event.
Well, you can look online, yeah.
But I could, I could also find out. We've been in communication. Thank you.
Okie dokie. Councilman O'To, uh, sorry, O'Connell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, not much to report, just very excited to see those bids come in for the concession stand and, uh, the plans.
Yeah, they look really good.
The layout looks nice and, uh, we'll see what happens.
Yep, I think it's gonna look great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Lovasolo.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so since our last mayor and council meeting on February 8th, we had a land use committee meeting on February 20th at 8:00 AM. Um, as always, we started off discussing residential property issues and concerns and we continue to work towards resolving those straggling ones as new ones always seem to crop up. Um, we discussed the informational, oh, we discussed, there's an informational stormwater video that we have to view as elected officials. And actually, new land use board members also have to watch it. But the great thing is it's ever since COVID, all the stuff is online, so it's just something we're gonna have to view online. Um, we also, as we're looking towards warmer weather and our early spring, as the groundhog anticipated, um, looking forward to our outdoor dining and making sure that we're working with our businesses to make sure that they have successful outdoor dining that's safe for our residents and profitable for them. Um, I sat in on one of the facility meetings. I was on the heels of the land use meeting. That was.
This Wednesday, Tuesday?
9:00 AM that same day, right?
Yes.
Yeah, heels. Um, and, uh, and that was fun. It was, it was great sitting in and learning more.
Little over an hour discussing various topics.
We did, yeah. And Borough Hall is looking amazing, so Allison left. But thank you for all of you guys who've been working on that. It's really been great. On February 21st, we had our finance meeting. Um, that was at 10:00 AM. Um, we're continuing to review our department capital requests and I think we're on version two of looking at our 2024 budget proposals, um, as we look at our 2023 expenses and review our revenue stream from last year. Um, in addition, we were, went to a great mural, um, fundraiser event at Allendale Social um, that most everyone here from the council was able to attend. Uh, that was great. Looking really forward to that progressing and working with the schools on that and that's about it, Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Homan. So this is kind of fun that I get to be Joe a little bit and talk about the DPW, which allows me to say, Andy, again, you've like. again, you've like come on board and really had um, a lot of snow, a lot, a lot of things going on. And I, I am, yeah, but I think we'd all agree and you know, and, and there's been just, you know, noticed how well the streets have been maintained during those storms. And so to you and your team and the communication that you have with our subcontractors, it's really appreciated. So thank you so much. Um, and from a water perspective, I think it's really important that the community and everybody here, I think you're all aware that the West Crescent well, that the temporary treatment did go online. Um, it was tested at non-detect for the PFAS that had been the violation that had been received there. So we're thrilled, yeah, we're thrilled that now we have the new street temporary treatment up and running as well as the West Crescent treatment up and running. Yes. And uh, Veolia continues to be very good at communication. Uh, they communicated to myself and Andy just this week that they will actually be changing the uh, media in the new street station, new street plant facility already. And um, that's great. So again, just that continual communication between our two organizations is super important. Um, and I will let Ray give our update on the legal side, just that we're progressing with Veolia as far as finishing up the remaining work that needs to be concluded for us to have the escrow, the remaining dollars that will come back to Allendale from the sale. Um, wrap up as, as soon as we can. We've had meetings and we're moving forward. Uh, and then from a sewer perspective, the last meeting, thank you to all of you on the council that you passed the agreement with Saddle River, which is important because it allows us to have something more formalized. And as Saddle River has, you know, to manage some of the challenges with some of their building, it allows us to have an agreement in place that is clear and that ensures that we will not be bearing financial burdens from uh, developments that they have to manage. Excellent. And that's it. Perfect. Thank you very much. Councilman O'Toole.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, fairly quick report this evening. Uh, since our last meeting, we've had a couple of meetings to discuss issues such as increasing our volunteers and different ways that we can support the fire department and AVAC in the effort to bring in new members to better serve our residents. Both of our new police officers are off field training. They are on the road and a welcome addition to our borough family. Uh, we've ordered a new police car. It'll be uh, lettered up to match the new vehicle design, which will make our officers more visible while out on patrol. Uh, Bergen County OEM has approved the borough's updated emergency operations plan, which will now be forwarded to the state for final approval and then distributed to emergency services. Uh, and finally, just another reminder that March twenty-eighth, the firehouse, we have our Gary Letizia Memorial Blood Drive uh, from one to seven PM, tremendous blood shortage. So please come out and roll up your sleeves. Look into guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, staff reports. Our clerk, Linda?
Um, I'm sorry, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Quite all right. John Gill, our comms guy?
Uh, just finishing up our newsletter. Uh, uh, in there, you'll find the information about, because I want to roll it out at one time. So our seniors have with the mobile um, uh, motor vehicle. Uh, the information will be in there, then released on Facebook at the same time. So everyone kind of hits the link at the same time. So one group is like how they get their messages and getting a head start, besides our grade seniors and everything like that. Um, and then just working with our grade senior at Borough Hall on a lot of the improvements you're seeing.
Very excellent. Thank you very much. Chief Mike Dillon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, department has seen an uptick of phone and internet scams, specifically a purported family member being arrested and gift cards needed to pay for bail or outstanding fictitious utility bills or tax liens. We strongly encourage residents not to have a dialogue with anyone who demands money from you over the phone or in person. Use your police department as a resource and call us to ask if a scam is occurring. Most importantly, never pay anyone you do, you don't know with gift cards. Or uh, electronic.
Yeah, that's scary. It is really scary. And it's on the rise, right?
It was two alone today, one uh, over the phone. It was resident who had to wear with all the call us and uh, and we uh, you know, listened to the story and told them, please, please, please do not give that person any money. And then when I was leaving, an officer was taking the report uh, by somebody came in our lobby and they had a envelope full of used gift cards, unfortunately to tune up a couple thousand dollars. So it's still occurring. Uh, unfortunately, these people prey on our elderly or our uh, they tear at your heartstrings uh, saying that, you know, we need it now. Don't tell anybody. Please go immediately. Um, speaking personally, it happened to my father-in-law and um, it was thousands of dollars that he lost. And he just thought that he owed people money and he's elderly and it was an unfortunate fact and that money will never come back.
No, that's terrible.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Maybe um, we'll put something in our newsletter about that.
Love that idea.
Yeah.
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 Thank you.
Alright, DPW supervisor, Andy Gugliero.
We're getting good.
Oh, I know. That was kidding.
You know, I thought I was going to have to put a sign up with my name.
I just remember. No, I know it now.
Um, I just want to echo what everybody's been saying. Borough Hall is looking fantastic. Um, colors are great and love the new addition signs. They're nice, very nice. Looking beautiful. Um, Councilwoman Holman, just to echo what you said, can't do it without a great support team. Everybody's been great. So, um, had a lot of complaints about potholes in town. Um, Tuesday, we tackled a lot of them and I got a new one.
Smiling at you.
So, but um, we did uh, get an attaboy from one of the residents over on Harold. Uh, was very gracious for the pothole work on Chestnut. Um, and that is about.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Alright, and I will give my very short report. Um, two-ten, if everybody was driving by, you see there's actually three walls up now. So that is the gym slash um, it's also not just a gym though. It's also going to be like a uh, an event kind of community center on that side also. Because there is a kitchen that opens up into it. And then the other side is going to be more of like tables and uh, possibly like other type of seating arrangements. We've had actually a couple tech meetings uh, regarding the entrance and how we're going to manage uh, residents going in and out of it. So we're trying to pretty much keep up with the twenty-first century and go as high-tech as possible. So I think we've had about three tech meetings now. A lot of it is over my head, but I told them exactly what I wanted. And there is something out there that can match it. Um, also met with John Gill and Amanda Richards to hear what the Borough Hall side um, perspective is of it. So we're trying to manage it where we're not fully going to staff it, but we want it so it's not going to be a lot of work on the Borough Hall side as, as well. And there's so much technology out there. It really shouldn't have to be. So um, we're trying to streamline that as much as possible. Uh, we also, as Councilwoman Suzanne Liva Solo said, we've had lots of meetings uh, this week, uh, budget talks. We had a lot of land use and facility meetings, so all great stuff. We had a wonderful uh, mural fundraiser. Um, to remind everybody, this mural is a massive community project. And uh, Allendale resident sculptor and artist Simon Rig is leading it. And it's just so cool because he has all three schools involved and he's in all the schools in Hillside right now. Having them do which is age appropriate, so they're, they're making um, little birds out of clay. And then he's going to somehow put it all together on this massive mural. So um, with that comes a lot of fundraising. So the fundraiser was successful. I have a check here for ten grand that I got from Hampshire. And I have another check that I just received from Holiday Observers for five thousand dollars. So thanks to both of those organizations. And I really hope that uh, more come forward as the momentum, you know, picks up. Um, and Andy, uh, thanks. It feels, it feels like you've been here forever. You've only been here for like, how many, two months? Um, but yes, you have all the snowstorms and um, you've been just very receptive. Uh, so I really appreciate um, how you've ingrained yourself in the community already. And uh, so if we go too hard on you, let us know because you really are still technically pretty new. Um, and thanks to all the staff. I mean, the place looks so good. I know um, John and um, Allison put all of, if you look in the quilt room, we Fred Lit actually found the original drawings from the people who sketched out what they were going to quilt on the quilt room. And they're gorgeous. They're like these beautiful color, very bright, brilliant. And they were stuck in an envelope for I don't know how many years. So they framed them and they're on the wall and they look, they look really super. Um, we all think it's just very important to have a, a nice space for our staff, uh, not just, you know, for the residents, but for the staff as well. So when they come to work, they're coming to a nice, clean place. And it's just was getting a little bit tired. So um, we are redoing the kitchen. So the staff has a place to go, but it's also open to the residents. Um, and then we are working out ways of uh, kind of transitioning everybody over to the new, new community center because that is going to be a wonderful space for all our volunteer organizations. And we know that our volunteer organizations are what make Allendale so special. So with that, right, uh, oh, I forgot Ray. I'm just trying to say Ray.
If I was a spo-.
Keeping me in line.
If I was a spoilsport, I'd say no report.
Borough attorney, Ray West.
So it has been a busy couple of weeks. Um, Tom of my office continues to uh, to work with our expert um, as well as uh, the Borough Committee uh, on the cell tower issue.
Oh, yeah.
As we've discussed, the uh, existing leases expire at the end of May. Um, so I think uh, as the presentation of, of the last meeting indicated, uh, the hope here is that uh, not only will the communications be improved, but it may actually be a net positive economically for the borough. So uh, you know, that, that continues to go forward. Uh, Tim of my office has been working on Oprah requests, which now not only span the clerk's office, but the police department uh, and some, I guess, pretty significant redaction issues uh, with the chief. Um, and, and unfortunately, it is a huge manpower effort, uh, whether it is through, through Linda's office or through the chief's office uh, to comply with Oprah requests because obviously none of us want to be uh, subject to formal proceedings on non-compliance. So it's a, uh, I will say it's more of an art form than a science, making some of these judgments as to what can be redacted and, and what can't. Uh, working with the Borough Committee on um, an issue, as I think we discussed last time, involving the pending foreclosure of one of our affordable housing units, um, trying to assess what is best for the borough, both in terms of the economics of staving off that foreclosure and not losing a credit for one unit that we've already got. Um, and as we learned, this is a uh, a two-bedroom family unit, uh, which is one of the more prized uh, affordable housing units. So uh, we really do not want to lose that, that unit. Uh, working with the uh, the chief of the Borough Committee on some, I'll call it contract interpretation issues that we have with the PBA as a uh, a bargaining unit. Uh, we continue to work on those. Frankly, awaiting responses from the PBA on both of those pending matters. And then working with the chief on some other departmental matters that are pending. Uh, with the Borough Committee, uh, we've got ongoing labor negotiations with both our white collar and our DPW unit. Um, I think we are very close to closure with our white collar unit. Uh, the DPW is still in a, I'll say a formative stage as negotiations move forward. Uh, Councilwoman Holman mentioned uh, the approval at the last meeting of the Saddle River Agreement. Um, but as was mentioned in earlier reports, uh, we now have the um, the issue of Saddle River facing another monumental project on our border, uh, and that's going to require some, no attention as we move forward. Uh, Councilwoman Holman mentioned the um, the Veolia sale. And I'll just supplement that to remind the governing body that as part of the sale, net of surveying costs, uh, it was a holdback or an escrow of three point two-five million dollars. There are three aspects to that holdback, um, that we are working hard to bring the closure and get that money for the borough. Uh, and you may recall that uh, one of them was the conveyance of certain property of Veolia by way of actually a deed, a fee deed. Uh, we think we're very, very close to having that resolved. In fact, we're down to one property. Uh, when we get that resolved, uh, that will uh, result in a uh, a one point four-five million dollar return to the borough, which I'm sure if Allison were here, she'd be very happy to hear that that would be in the borough's coffers. Yeah, we, yes, we have fourteen plus already there, which was nice. Uh, and then we have a uh, an issue we're trying to work out with uh, DEP, a green acres issue involving two of the easements. Uh, we've been in communications with them, but you know, frankly, uh, my uh, email to them asking for a uh, a, a meeting virtual or in person uh, some two weeks ago, uh, the sort of at the moment deaf ears. Uh, and then I guess uh, yeah, I think that's uh, pretty much my shopping list for the last two weeks.
Um, and just to add on to the Oprah, um, Mike brought up, uh, Chief Dillon brought up at the last meeting um, about the specific Oprah requests that are coming in on body cams. And he said that, um, he mentioned that, um, I reached out to Senator Holly Shapizzi with regards to that because it is targeting women and at their most vulnerable times. So she actually did some research on it and found that there is already a bill being introduced and asked herself to be uh, second on that bill. So we'll hear hopefully more for that, from that. And hopefully that'll get um, resolved and these, these bad actors will be put to bed, so to speak. Alright, um, any unfinished business? Uh, and new business? I have a email request here. Uh, Scott Miller, who's the president of the Allendale Chamber, is requesting approval from the mayor and council to hold the Allendale Festival Day on Saturday, September twenty-first and the holiday walk on Friday, December sixth. All in favor? Hi. Alright, um, I'd like to open it up to comments from the public at this time. Walter, come on up. Get your name and address, please.
Walter Wimmer, three is Hamilton. This is, I'm, I'm not complaining, I'm asking questions. Uh, you just passed an ordinance, twenty-four dash oh-three. And listed in it was revised, chapter twenty-six, twenty-three, whatever. How am I, I'm asking a question to find out what that's about.
So if you go online actually and you pull up the ordinance and you actually click on the ordinance, the whole entire one will, will come up and it'll show you. It was just adding a clarification, adding a clarification sentence to it. So you would have to actually go in or you could call one of us and we can, you know, email it to you if you'd like. That's more, if that's more comfortable for you.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to be educated.
Well, so in the beginning of the meeting, I have attorney review. Remember, I asked Chief Dillon to explain it. So he explained it in, in their, in the uh, review of the agenda in the beginning of the meeting. Would you like him to maybe explain it again?
I'm, I'm trying to get in my mind, the method by which I can be educated as to how everything works. I've been here a while and each step along the line, I'm learning a little bit more. My question I do have, you mentioned Saddle River is infringing on our borderline. How do I find out about that? Specifically where it is, what they're doing? And is it my business?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's really, it's Saddle River's business, but it's our business because it's on our border. So I actually write about those things in my mayor's report. Um, and you come to the meeting. So that's actually, what you're doing is better than, you know, the best way to get information is you're coming to meetings and you're asking us. Um, so that's where, that's where you actually really get the best information is coming to the meeting. So you're doing an awesome job.
Well, it'd be a hell of a better.
No, you're doing great, Walter. And any questions? You know, you could always call us, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Come on up, boys.
Uh, Jacob Avella, one oh eight Myrtle Ave. Um, I have two questions. Uh, the first one is about the uh, construct, the um, upgrading of the um, Crestwood Lake um, concession stand.
Mm hmm.
Um, when is the idea of starting it? Is it going to be at the beginning of the summer or in the winter?
Would you like to take this Tyler or would you like me to?
So it's a, it's a multi-phase process. So first, the old structure is going to be developed prior to the start of the season. As such, there won't be a traditional concession stand for the upcoming season. However, there will be provisions put in place. Um, first and foremost, to pass county requirements and inspections, but also to have uh, facilities, uh, restrooms, showers as needed. And then um, perhaps some other options for actual concessions, if you will, for the lake. So they could, they just. Demolition. Demolition, sorry. I don't know why that word escaped me. The demolition will take place prior to the season and as such, we'll have that. And then for season twenty-twenty-five, there will be a new building in place.
Um, my second question is about the um, community center.
Mm hmm.
Um, it will, there ever be a um, possibility for uh, people at Northern Highlands to, or in the community to volunteer at the community center?
Sure. Actually, we were talking about that today, how. Sure. Actually, we were talking about that today, how we would like it staffed during certain areas, certain times where we want to have, say, like an open gym or like an open community center. And at those times, we would like it staffed, and we will be looking for volunteers for this particular time.
Where would that be available when it comes up?
So probably not until the fall. So we're expecting the building to be done in August, September. So I would say probably October, November.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Lewis? Come on up. Good.
Josh, you too.
You can think of a question. State your name.
Jacob Avello, one oh eight Myrtle Ave. With the veil, they're looking great. I'm a, an Audi technician and I'm a certified EV, a vehicle repair person. Do you guys are going to have some stations on that property?
For the electric vehicles? There is actually on the back. I think there's three, maybe four. Yes, they're all, we don't own the veil at all. The Borough does not own the veil.
Oh, okay.
That's owned by Hampshire.
Okay.
We will, we own just the community center portion of it. Yeah. And they did put in, I think, four in the back, which weren't originally on the plans, but they did.
Because I don't remember seeing in any of the plans.
There wasn't when the original did it. But remember, we started this project back in like two thousand eighteen.
And another reason why I brought that up, because there's a lot of people that, like in my, in my job, I worked for Jack Daniel's Audi in opposite river, and you actually could use your credit card to actually be able to charge your cars. So that would be another, you know, way of getting money to the town as well.
Yeah, so Matt, I don't know if you want to speak to that, because I know you've looked into it in the commuter lot.
We've looked into it, and I think it's a great idea. We've applied for a grant. A couple of years ago, we did not get it. I was in touch with our grant writer earlier this year, and she assured me that there are more coming to be available this year. And as soon as they come available, we're going to put in for them again.
Yeah, that's pretty, that'd be great.
We used a couple downtown. It's just, it's a great thing. They're becoming more popular. People, you know, to your point, they pay to charge, and while they're charging, they're staying in town, they're eating in our restaurants, they're shopping.
Exactly.
So it's, it's a big benefit. So we'll work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? All right, then that concludes our meeting. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bye-bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.